All right. I call the Sammamish Planning Commission March 21st meeting to order. We're here in the Council Chambers in Sammamish City Hall. We're a few minutes late getting started here, but let's start with roll call of the Commission, starting on my left.
Josh Amato.
Rituja Endapure.
Mark Lewis.
Mark Baughman.
Roshino Farrell.
Larry Crandall.
Thank you. Next on the list, and I believe Commissioner Brooks has an excused absence although he may walk in, so that's where I think we may see Eric later. Next is approval of the agenda for this evening. Does anyone have any objections, comments for the agenda for this evening?
No.
Okay, seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next is approval of the meeting minutes from our previous meeting, March 7th. Does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I did not intend to vote yea. I meant to, I didn't actually vote verbally. Is there a process for voting in abstention or present that I'm in something like that?
So for, I'll try to answer, and you guys can correct me if I get any of this wrong. So for common, the items that, at the beginning here, such as the agenda and the meeting minutes, we don't necessarily vote, we just do...
I'm sorry, recorded in the minutes is a vote of unanimous, 7-0. And I was wondering, is there a way to vote in abstention or present for the Planning Commission on motion?
I think if you typically, what we try to do is either vote yes or no, or say nothing. The trick is for, you know, who's ever keeping, Anthony or whoever's keeping the minutes to catch that.
Okay.
So I would suggest, I think, if you have a strong feeling about it, then after we've voted yea, no, then speak up and make your, you know, comment to that effect. I think that probably is the best way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Generally speaking, if you don't say anything, that's a non, that's an abstain, essentially. But the trick is, he's got to catch it.
He's got to catch it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize if I may have missed that. The minutes, I imagine, can also just be edited to reflect what actually happened.
And that's where my comment here was getting to, was can I just get a correction on that one?
What was, I'm not clear on the matter that you're speaking to specifically. What vote was it specifically that you're inquiring about?
Approval of the level of service concurrency.
Okay. And your vote, you believe your vote was...
I was silent during the vote, and it was recorded as a yea. And I'm just curious how...
Okay, and you were silent, you were meaningfully silent?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so...
And that would go for me, too, actually.
You were silent as well?
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't feel, being my second meeting and the information provided me, I didn't know enough of the background, and I just abstained. But I abstained by just being quiet.
Okay. So maybe for the future, so the city council does something along these lines currently, which has been helpful for them, is they raise their hands when they vote. So you're, let's, for example, we have a motion on the floor now. The chair would call for a vote, all say aye, you would verbally indicate, but then you would also show a hand. Nays, you'd do the same thing, and then anyone that hasn't shown a hand at that point, the chair would normally be mindful of observing. We would then confirm that that's your abstaining from voting. So is that fair enough?
Yep.
That way, we'll, Anthony and Sarah here won't have to do some guesswork then. If they don't hear any nays or any abstaining, I think that's probably what happened here. For lack of any other evidence, we went in with a 7-0. So we apologize for that.
Absolutely. No, I perfectly understand how it happened. I was just curious about the process for what I should do in the future.
So we'll give it a go tonight and see how it goes. We'll try it out. Trial balloon here this evening.
Are we able to revise the previous minutes, or is that a more involved process?
So now that we've clarified this for the record, I think maybe we could get a motion to amend the minutes, and then we'll make sure that those get reflected for the official record. So then you'll be voting on the minutes as amended here this evening.
I would make that motion to amend the minutes of the last meeting to reflect that Josh Amato and myself, Mark Lewis abstained from voting.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to amend the minutes, as Commissioner Lewis pointed out. Any comments on that, or questions, or further changes? Okay, let's go ahead and vote the proper new way for that. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye and raise your hand. Aye. All those opposed, nay and raise your hand. Motion passes, and the minutes as amended are approved.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, next is public comment for non-agenda items. Does anybody want to make public comment for non-agenda items this evening? Mary, okay, go ahead, Mary.
Hi, my name is Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. I wasn't going to speak, but based on what you just said, I thought I'd, I've gone to meetings for four years now, and I thought I'd tell you what I've seen. In city council, I don't know if it applies to Planning Commission, if they abstain, it's counted as a for vote. So even if you abstain, they count it as saying yes. I don't know if that's true for you guys. And then I do know one thing that is useful, is when you guys vote in the Planning Commission, if you, like if everybody votes together, obviously it's unanimous, but if you have people that are dissenting, sometimes city council wants to know why a person did, and then they will even ask about it in a city council meeting. So I don't know if you want to pass that information along when you do things, or not, just as general procedure. And I don't know if you had the training yet with Anne McFarland, or Amy McFarland, with Diana, that was awesome training. But those are just a couple of things I've seen from city council meetings, I just wanted to share it here.
Thanks. And it's Jurassic Parliament is the name of that training?
Yeah, there you go.
Paul? Okay, thank you, Mary.
Sir Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Crandall.
What Ms. Victor said is, is what I recalled. I was going to jump in, but was going to wait till afterwards to do that, that to abstain by being silent ends up being an affirmative vote. But with this new way, this should work then.
So I'll confirm my bright idea with our Roberts Rules experts who aren't here this evening, and if there's something, I mean, I think for tonight, I think your only other vote here will be to adjourn the meeting, so hopefully we can get that one right. And if there's, if there's a situation that we need to modify to be fully compliant, we'll certainly have Kelly or someone from our clerk's office confirm that for us, and we'll make sure we get it right, so, yeah.
I would also maybe just point out that I believe it would be perfectly acceptable for something like we were doing last time around. If you're going, if you anticipate that you're probably going to abstain, it's okay to make comments to that effect, and those will be on the record, so the council could, in fact, watch the video and hear you say, in your own words, why you feel like you wanted to do that. So just an encouragement, if you're thinking about that, it might be one way to do it. Okay? So next is an item of old business, actually, although it will seem a bit new to us, and that's Miriam Leitner providing for us a work session and presentation on Sammamish Municipal Code Title 24.
Did you want to do an intro? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Thank you, Chair. I'm Jeff, this is Miriam, obviously, and she's going to be doing the bulk of the presentation this evening. So this is a follow-up from your second meeting in February, I believe, where we introduced this subject and went back into history to give you an introduction to Title 24 as it exists today. Some of the work that both staff and the Planning Commission at the time did on the first crack at a new Title 24A, which would replace Title 24 in its entirety. What we've done here is, I think there's going to be some slides from the slide deck that will be similar to a month ago, but then we've also started to kind of build the substance a little bit to forward this conversation with the idea that your second meeting in April, we would have a public hearing on the matter and then do some deliberation. So we did have some questions come in late. I think Miriam is going to address some of those. I think during the presentation, we'll certainly have an opportunity for Q and A here this evening. Also, any direction you'd like to give staff this evening based on additional code work that we should be doing over the next few weeks in advance of April 18th? We would certainly appreciate that direction this evening, and we'll obviously get to doing that work. And last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Miriam, we felt we had a really productive meeting, the first meeting, and I'm sure we're going to here again tonight. I did mention to the chair and the vice chair during our check-in meeting earlier this week, this is, focus here is on doing good work and making sure everyone's comfortable with what might potentially move forward to the council. So we have noticed the public hearing for April 18th, but if we need more time beyond that date to continue our work on this, to make sure that the seven of you, six of you, plus the vice chair who's not here this evening are comfortable, we're, there's certainly no full court press from staff to try and move something forward if you're not ready to. Take our time, make sure we're all comfortable with it, and go from there. So with that, Miriam, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
I'll turn it over to Miriam.
Okay, so a few housekeeping items before we get started. You should all have in front of you a copy of the draft Title 24A, and then an edit sheet. And that edit sheet is a good place, if you find typos, little edits, you can just note them on there, and then hand them in, or email them in afterward. Okay. Why isn't this working?
I don't think I can have this open.
Sorry.
Try that again.
Okay. Sorry about that. So before we dive into the code itself, we just wanted to talk through a couple of questions that we've had from several people. And the first one is, what section of Title 24 is being replaced, and where did the content of Title 24 go? So just to clarify, we're proposing to repeal the entire Title 24 and then replace it with Title 24A. In terms of the content, Title 24 was last updated 16 years ago. So when we had Legal take a look at what needed to be carried over, there was a lot of content that they felt we could let go of because it was either outdated, it was repeating language that was already in the comprehensive plan, the RCW or other documents, or it could be moved into other sections of code. So we are creating a Q and A matrix with all of the questions that have been sent in, and will continue to be sent in, and we'll cover this in more detail in that matrix. The second question was around, how does the draft that was made now compare to what was done in 2017? So, because I can't let go of a good theme. So the 2017 version of Title 24A really included kind of the main foundational pieces, and in our review, especially after we went through several more rounds of doing the docket, we felt that there were still some essential items that were needed to be put back in there. And so you'll notice in the draft that we're looking over tonight, that there's a lot more detail in terms of the procedures, and that it's divided more into sections, that it's easier to find what you need. For those of you who this graphic is not working for, and you want something a little more concrete, I have this. So both versions of Title 24A contain a purpose, which introduces the title, talks about what the code is intended to do, and talks about why it's needed. The draft from 2017 included a definitions section, and in the case of this new draft, we've taken those definitions and we've integrated it directly into the text. And the reason we did that is so that the reader doesn't have to flip back and forth. So you can find some examples of that on page one in particular. So if you look closely there, you'll see that we've defined the periodic update, the annual review, the annual docket, and it's all woven directly into the text there. In 2017, there were two procedure sections, a general one that focused on the amendment schedule and the type of amendments permitted, and then another one that focused on the biannual review procedures. And in the version you'll be looking at tonight, you'll see that we've categorized procedures so they're more specific to each stage of the process. Any questions on that? Okay. Okay, so we are now going to start our review of the new Title 24A. It has three chapters, and since we only have two hours tonight to go over everything, we wanted to focus your attention on the areas where we've made the most changes, which is not to say that we can't discuss the other areas, so please feel free to interrupt, to ask questions, to comment, if I'm not going in the order that works for you. So we're going to quickly jump into the general provision chapter, which includes the purpose. There's some direction related to the periodic update there, and then it introduces the annual review. That's all I'm intending to say on that section, because I feel like it's pretty self-explanatory, but I wanted to open it up in case there's any comments or questions there before we do a deeper dive into the next section. Anything? Okay. Okay, so under the annual amendment chapter, there's four sections that you see on screen, and we're going to be starting our conversation focused on the annual docket procedures, which you can find on the bottom of page one. So at last month's meeting, we talked a little bit about some changes that we'd like to make to the procedures, as well as the application forms, so that it's easier for applicants since we're not able to do in a rata sheet. And you'll see a good example of that in subsection one relating to the year-round open application period. And so our vision here was that applicants can submit a docket request as soon as they find something that they think needs to be changed, and they don't have to wait for a certain time of year. We'll pull all of the applications that are submitted by the annual deadline for docket review, and then anything submitted after that would go to the following year. In subsection two, you'll see kind of same as usual, text amendments and site-specific land use map amendments. And subsection three, I'm going to hold on talking about because we're going to go over that in more detail shortly. Any questions here? So once a docket request is placed on the docket, we will start referring to it as an amendment proposal, and it will move through legislative review, and that's the next area that we're going to be looking at. And you can find that on page three. So one of the major items to note in subsection one is that we're adding an additional application form here, and we're requiring it 30 days after the docket is set. The reason we're doing this is it's going to allow us to create a much more simplified application for the docket review, so that it's going to reverse the workload for applicants who may not make it to legislative review. And for those who do make it to legislative review, the second application will be the place where we collect all the information that's required from the comprehensive plan, as well as any other documentation related to their proposal. Any questions on that part? Okay. And really, the major change relating to subsections two and three is that they're two separate subsections now. I talked about last month how we really wanted to separate the text amendment procedures from the site-specific land use map amendment procedures. And so there are similarities, but we felt like, to make it more clear for applicants and staff, it was better to keep them separate, so that the procedures are really clearly defined. So to better understand the flow of the proposed processes, your chair and vice chair thought it'd be helpful to go over a couple of examples, so we're going to jump into that. I'm calling these our dress rehearsals. So our dress rehearsal for text amendment process is an old amendment that was submitted by the city of Sammamish for the 2018 docket, and the proposal was to amend the text of the comprehensive plan to reference the updated pro plan. So if you just take a minute to look at the content on this screen, we'll start looking at how it will play out. Okay, so in this example, the Parks Department would go online, they'd submit a docket request, which would ask them to provide really basic information, what they're proposing to change, why it's needed. Once it's submitted, staff would review the request to make sure it's complete and follow up with them on next steps. And then once the deadline for the year is passed, staff will take all of the complete docket requests that have been received, create summaries that would go up on the website, so that the public can submit comments on the applications. After this, staff would present the docket request to Planning Commission and provide a recommendation for each request, looking at alignment with our work plan, if there's budget and staff availability to complete the full review, and also consistency with the city's policy and programmatic priorities. So very similar with what we're already doing currently. Planning Commission would have a public hearing and make a recommendation to city council on which requests should be added to the docket, and then city council will review staff and Planning Commission recommendations and hold a public hearing before they decide which request should be placed on the docket for further consideration. So in this example, assuming that the pro plan update is docketed, Parks would have 30 days to submit a text amendment proposal application, and this is where we'd be requiring the required comp plan information. In our example, staff would also at this time prepare a redlined version of the proposed changes to the comp plan text, and prepare any additional information that might assist the Planning Commission and city council in making their decision. So as you can see on screen, the two processes are very similar in terms of what happens. So we have a public hearing for Planning Commission, a public hearing for city council, and then a decision being made. The main difference really comes in the decision criteria. So with the docket, you're looking at whether there's room on the work plan, the budget, all those things that I talked about before. Once it moves to the amendment proposal, you're going to be making a decision using the decision criteria that you'll see on page four and five of the draft that's in front of you, and we'll be talking more about those later. So once the decision has been made, council will decide which applications should be approved, and they'll pass an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan based on what they've decided. Any questions on the text amendment process? Okay.
Miriam, I had a quick question. I can't see it here right now, but I remember there's some fees associated with applications.
So currently, for a text amendment, there is no fee. There is a fee right now for a pre-application conference, which is required for a site-specific land use map amendment.
Okay, so you'll touch that when we talk about that section?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so we are now moving to our dress rehearsal for a site-specific land use map amendment?
Yes.
Just to supplement that answer from your question, the fees are not contained in this code. So the fees are part of the master fee schedule, which is updated and adopted once per year by city council, generally as part of the budget process, so whether it's for approval of the biennial budget, or when they do the mid-buy adjustment on those off-years. So there'll be no, we don't have the ability through this work that we're doing right now to add, delete, or modify fees for these things. That's something that would need to be done as part of the master fee schedule.
Can I ask why there would be a fee?
Well, there is no fee for text amendments. There is a fee for the site-specific, as a big part of it is cost recovery, the work that we do on it for a private-initiated application, much like all of our other land use planning and permit-type actions, we have fees for those as well. It's, I can tell you, in going through one of these site-specific land use map amendment proposals right now that was docketed two years ago, the fee is not, the fee is going to recover a very low percentage of the actual costs that will go into the city processing time, analyzing, and actually taking it through the actual review process, so... Does that, is that helpful?
Yes, but you could take that to kind of an extreme. Anybody comes in and talks to a receptionist, you have to recover the costs, so you have a fee. I mean, you see what I'm saying? It just seems to be...
Sure.
It could go down a rabbit hole.
But we offer, the city does offer free services at its front counter in the permit center, related to general Q and A, people that are coming in to get information about city codes and so forth. But once an actual action is initiated for a site-specific property, whether it's a rezone action, or a building permit, or some other, again, land use permit or building permit type of action, that is where the fee then kicks in, and then we do, whether it's for this or any of those other things, the city does track its time in our system to make sure that we're billing against those permits for the reviews that we're doing, so...
Okay, so going back to our dress rehearsal, on screen you'll see a previous application whose information has been changed slightly, and this proposal was to change the zoning on the comprehensive plan's future land use map for three adjacent parcels, taking each one from an R1 to an R4. So in this case, our applicant, Sam Amish, would be required to complete a pre-application conference before submitting a docket request, just like we talked about. Currently, this is a type 3, so we charge the same that we would a type 3 pre-application conference for any other land use. So the reason that we require a pre-application conference here is because the site-specific land use map amendment process and the related zone reclassification process is really complex. There's a lot of steps, it takes a lot of time, and it can take a lot of money as well. So we want to be really transparent and help the applicant understand the process and what they may be getting into before they make their decision as to whether to apply or not. So after the pre-application conference, Sam would complete the docket request, and we'd really follow a very similar process to what we already discussed for the text amendment. Again, if the application makes it onto the docket, Sam would have 30 days to submit a site-specific land use map amendment proposal application. And in this case, that would include the required comprehensive plan information, but also the SEPA checklist, and any other information that would help us gain a better understanding of the property and the potential impact if the request is approved. So we would go through the same process, just like we did with the text amendment, using the decision criteria on pages four and five, and then city council would decide which applications to approve and pass an ordinance. The major difference comes in that if the site-specific land use map amendment creates inconsistency with the current zoning map, the approval from city council would be contingent on the applicant receiving approval for the zoner classification. So like most property owners in Sammamish, the future land use map of Sam's property matches the current zoning map. So the contingent approval would apply to him. And now that the ordinance has passed, Sam will have 90 days to submit a zoner classification application. And so this is a type 3 land use application, and it would change the current zoning map so that it matches the future land use map that was just approved, and that's a decision that's made by the hearing examiner. Any questions on that part? Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. Okay. So my question was, do all maps associated, or whatever it shows zoning, do all of them have to be updated, or is it just the one which shows the zoning? Is that the specific map that needs to be updated?
So we have the land use map, that's part of the comprehensive plan, and then we have the zoning map, which is part of the zoning and development code. Those, the zoning map needs to be consistent with the land use map, right? So you got the land use map up here, you've got the zoning code here, they need to be in sync. So one of the, so to answer your question directly, yes. So if you're going, they are, they are, they are essentially mirror images of each other, right? So a parcel of land on the land use map up here would have, and by way of example, an R4 land use map designation. That zoning map is a mirror image, consistent with it, that same parcel on the zoning map would be R4 zoning, right? So if you want to change the land use map, because the zoning map has to be consistent, you've got to initiate a change to the land use map. And I think what Miriam's getting to here in this graphic with the green box in the lower right corner, is that what we're, what we're trying to map out here is a very complex process, where we're trying to do it in an orderly and certainly a legal fashion. So we're going to go through, do the land use map amendment process first. If ultimately the city council gets to a point that they would like to approve that land use map amendment, what we envision, talking with Legal, is that the council will, the council will give approval, but it will be an approval that will be contingent essentially on then the zoning map, the zoning map being successfully amended through a rezone action as well. as well. And then once the rezone action is, assuming it's approved by the hearing examiner, then this ordinance approving the land use map amendment would essentially have an automatic, you know, an automatic switch in it that would then become effective so that then they both change at the same time. So you've always got that consistency with one another. This leads to a little bit of a broader issue that we're going to need to think about down the road a little bit, which is most jurisdictions, whether it's a city or a county, don't have a land use map that is so definitive with its R4, R6, you know, neighborhood, commercial, and so forth. It has broader categories that multiple zones on your zoning map will be consistent with. So example, using that R4, instead of having an R4 land use map designation, a jurisdiction may have something like a medium-density residential designation on their land use map, and then on their zoning map underneath, they may have an R4 zone and an R6 zone that would both be consistent with that medium density, right? So then what you get in other jurisdictions is you don't have to do this two-step action if you want to change essentially, you know, what your property, the zoning enablements of the property, what you can do with it from a density perspective, using the R4 example. Someone under that scenario could have a property zoned R4 designated as medium-density residential. They don't need to do anything with the comp plan. All this docketing nonsense that we're talking about here doesn't even come into play. They just come in and file a rezone application, pay their fee, and they would run through the quasi-judicial process. And in most, in many jurisdictions, it would go straight to the city's or county's hearing examiner for hearing and decision. So it takes this whole legislative component of always having to amend the land use map out of the conversation, and it really just creates a more streamlined action for change. If you're in that consistency, now if you got your, if you've got your medium-density land use map designation in your R4 zone, you're like, well, I want to rezone my property to R12. What would happen then is you'd be back into having to change maybe from a medium-density designation to a residential, to a high-density residential designation, and then do the rezone then in a sequence like that. So is that helpful? Great.
And I would just add that we crafted Title 24A, so if we were to do that, the language would still be relevant. We wouldn't have to go back and change that, but it also works in our particular situation right now.
And that's much, that's obviously a much, that's a, that's a pretty meaty topic there that we've just touched on. That's something that we would probably want to put some thought into having as perhaps a major work program item for both the planning commission and then ultimately the council consideration for the 2023 major update to the comp plan. Yeah.
Twenty twenty-eight, you said?
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
You know, that last answer got to my question, so perfect.
Great. Oh, sorry.
Miriam, maybe if you're going to get to this later, that's fine, but this is one spot where, if you could talk for a second or say we'll talk about it later, what's the difference in how, you know, whether or not something gets docketed versus whether or not something gets processed through an amendment? In other words, how do we decide docket versus amendment?
Right. So with the docket, that's where we're, the question we're answering is, does this warrant further review and consideration? And so we're looking at, you know, what does our current work plan look like? Is there room on there? What does our budget and our staffing plan look like? Do we have the capacity to take on this more in-depth review if it moves onto the docket? Does it align with our current priorities and policies? That decision will shift once you get to the amendment proposal. So that bottom row, the question then becomes, is this an amendment we want to make to the comp plan? And that's where your decision criteria that's on page four and five is going to come into play. Those are the things that you'll be considering to make your decision. Does that help?
So if I was to say, docket is, could we do it? An amendment is, should we do it? Is that a kind of a way for us to think about that so that the merit really is decided in the amendment process, not necessarily to a great extent in the docket process?
I love a catchy slogan, so that works for me, but I'm going to look at Jeff.
I like it too, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but that is a really good segue into the next topic, which is the decision criteria, and you'll find those on page four, continuing on to page five. So we've drafted four decision criteria for your consideration, and I'll just go through them and then open it up for conversation. So the first is that the amendment is consistent with the GMA, the county-wide planning policies, and the other provisions of the comprehensive plan. The second is that the amendment addresses change in circumstances, change in community values, or corrects information in the comprehensive plan. The third is that the amendment is in the greater public interest or represents an action, or sorry, and represents an action that best serves the entire community. And then the last one is that the amendment will have, or will not have an adverse effect on the fiscal impact of the city. So I'm going to open that up for discussion. I know there were some comments that came in already, so maybe we can bring those in here.
I'll just add my comment here that, which I've mentioned before. I think in the past, when I've been involved in or watched the docketing process, the folks that were requesting to get on the docket frequently either had not reviewed or didn't understand or whatever a lot of this. And so it created an atmosphere that was not always conducive to having the planning commission be able to take appropriate action. So I think just a little bit more rigor in communicating with people about what their, what the process is and what the criteria are, what the gates are for the docket, and then how it moves forward, might help this become a little bit more of an effective process within the city. It's been a bit of a struggle in the past, so some of that is just going to be communication, but I hope that we can find ways to improve that.
Share what my response was back to that, too. So I envision putting the decision criteria up on the webpage where people are submitting their applications, but also integrating it into the application itself so that the applicant is required to respond to how they're addressing these criteria.
And the criteria would be for both text amendments and for.
Correct.
Land use map, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to contribute to the conversation on this. We, we as a city, I think have come a long way, certainly since my arrival here in 2014 on this subject. We didn't, 2014 and 2015, we didn't have an annual amendment process my first two years here because we were in the midst of trying to complete the major update in 2015. So it was 2016, which was the first time that myself and then the planning staff that were here at the time actually cracked open, you know, Title 24 to really take a look at it from an annual amendment perspective, to really see what we were working with. And hence, one of the reasons why this project kind of was, it came about to start with was that first year in 2016 that we tried to run the docket process. I mean, you know, we had a very clear vision, I think, of what we wanted to do, how we wanted it to go. We didn't have a Title 24 code that really was being very helpful to us in that regard. So there's no doubt we struggled through that. And then, and then to probably make matters worse, on the heels of the major update in 2015, we had, we had some site-specific landowners that were, some of them had kind of banded together into little groups, and some of them were, I think, one-offs, individual properties that were looking to, you know, to seek a land use map amendment and a rezone. So that was, 2016 was, the docket process in 2016 is something I don't ever care to relive for the rest of my career. We tried to get to it in 2017. I think in 2017, we were a little bit more refined in trying to get the information upfront with folks. I think that's where we introduced the pre-app meeting requirement, even though it wasn't codified, but we did that administratively to try and have some dialogue with folks before the docket request deadline. So we went through that. Many of the same people from that 2016 year were back in 2017 to take another, kind of another whack at things, right? And so that probably wasn't the most memorable experience either because folks were frustrated that they kind of went through the process two years in a row and, you know, ended up getting roughly the same result with not being put on the docket. So, and then, you know, this year, or last year, excuse me, 2018, just I'll wrap up here quickly. I think we were much better prepared to have those types of site-specific property requests. We were, we were really armed with information, and I really feel like we were well organized. Miriam had a big part in that. But then we didn't really get the requests that we had received the previous two years. So, so I think in, where all this culminates is what we've got here in a draft for a new Title 24A is really going to codify a lot of what, you know, administratively we were trying to do over the previous three years. And Miriam's touched on this several times, but the quality, getting the quality, the information out there, being prepared and really being able to work with people upfront is really, that's something we've had a clear vision of in 17 and 18. And now this will help actually put it into law, so to speak. So, you know, we'll be required to do it. So, yeah. Thank you for hearing me out on that, reflecting back on memories.
Josh, again.
Yeah, I do, I do have a question. It says that the amendment will not have, we can look at it if the amendment doesn't have any adverse fiscal impact on the city. I'm wondering how that's determined and why that's in there at all. Shouldn't that be a determination that the planning commission can make, whether it's worth it or the council? I'm just curious what that, what that exactly means.
Yeah, so that's, that's, so the decision criteria that we're discussing in this section right now, that's for the actual legislative action. That's not, this is assuming something's already been docketed, now it's went through the legislative review. So this is like final decision on whether it's actually going to be approved or not, and the change will actually occur. So generally speaking, that the fiscal impact, and that's certainly something the commission can, can have some deliberation on and recommend some different language for this. This is something that you, a type of criterion that you do see quite frequently in, with site-specific actions, and other cities and counties have this as well in their code, with the idea being that the, the city doesn't want to be, in this case, the city wouldn't necessarily be interested in giving further development ability or rights to a piece of property, but end up being possibly on the hook for infrastructure improvements that would, that would be needed to have a property with a more intensive land use map amendment designation and a more intensive zoning district, if that makes sense. So this, the idea with this is that we, we aren't going to go out and put our, put our, the city government's, you know, neck out on the limb with the idea that then we'd have to provide some other benefit to a private entity back for that benefit they're already deriving from the upzoning or the more intensification of their land.
I have a question regarding that. I'm familiar with situation in the city currently, and I'm wondering if, if it doesn't fit exactly the definition you just described. Residential neighborhood on a hillside where some houses were built uphill, and the contractors built the houses, sold the houses, and in the first rain, the backyards of those houses flowed into the houses beneath them because the infrastructure wasn't there to handle the water. Is that an example of where the city might be responsible for financial improvements to fix that? Is that what you're?
Yeah, so that situation there where, we're not necessarily talking about changing the zoning, but it was just existing development rights that were, that were executed. And from your example, it sounds like a couple of houses or more than a couple of houses were constructed. And then for whatever reason, the infrastructure that was, you know, deemed to be adequate that went through civil engineering review and so forth, apparently in your example, was not adequate.
Apparently.
And, you know, there's damage being caused to other private properties. So that would definitely be a civil matter that.
A little different than what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's a little bit different. So, you know, an example that I'm trying to get to here is the city goes and, you know, does an intensification of development rights for a piece of property, and then, you know, it requires some sort of, you know, road, public road to be built through the property. And, you know, for some reason, there's, we don't want to be, or some other public road needs to be improved somewhere else, and, you know, because of this, the development has to pay for development. So we're trying to get this where we're not, we're not approving things that are going to put us in a situation where then we've got to go support that, right? So. Paul's probably got a better example sitting in the audience. I'm sure he's going to come up during public comment and let you know what, saying, Thomas, his example is stupid, I've got a better one, so.
Well, I like your examples, but what I really like is getting the graphics. But what came to mind is looking at the piggy bank. So is a piggy bank half-full or half-empty? And I'm serious, because what is a positive fiscal impact on the city? I read that and I said, okay, I understand adverse, but what would be a positive fiscal impact?
Well, that's a good question. I thought you were going to have an example.
Well, I, no, I like the graphics and that's.
Okay. Well, we're definitely, I mean, the goal here isn't, you know, when we talk about all this stuff, the goal isn't for the city to become rich off of all this either, right? We're, we're, you know, the government, we're kind of striving for net neutral here. We're certainly not handing out public benefits to, to, you know, one or more individuals, gifting a public fund, so to speak. But we're also not going the other direction where, we talked about cost recovery and fees a little bit earlier, and the goal isn't to set fees that somehow are going to make us rich, right? Where the goal is to maintain that, that kind of neutrality in, so that we're not having taxpayers fund the review of private development, right? So development pays for development is kind of the goal. Money in, money out, and we kind of stay, stay, stay at zero, so.
I guess I have more follow-up questions on that. What, how does, how do we determine that a change would have an adverse impact? Are we looking at an immediate cost horizon, a 10-year? Who's making that determination? And I guess, I don't know if this is a conversation we want to have, but do we need that section in there to where the city council can make a decision on a case-by-case basis if it's actually, if that adverse cost is worth it to the city to have whatever that update might be?
I kind of think we do in some, because, and I think, in a way, I like the vagueness of the language, because you never know what situation is going to occur. So maybe, you know, off-the-wall situation happens where the city ends up being on the hook for some major infrastructure improvement that you may not have been able to foresee. And our citizens, the community, might say, hey, we have to pay for this huge road now because so-and-so's developing over here. We're not okay with that. And so I think in a way, it's kind of protecting taxpayers, protecting the city from having to shoulder the cost for an unforeseen expense that maybe, you know, to shoulder the cost for an unforeseen expense that maybe, you know, so having the language vague like that helps us, it's kind of like a safety net to protect citizens for, just as Jeff was saying, for paying for private development, you know?
I think that might be, that would be an unknown cost that we might get settled with later that we weren't aware of. This is precluding us from doing something for, it appears to be known costs? Is, I mean, we can't, if we don't know that we're going to have a cost later, we can't not allow an amendment to come through because we don't know of a cost. It seems like it's precluding something if there is a known cost. And am I making, I don't know if I'm being clear on what I'm trying to say.
So let me attempt to kind of describe what I've seen typically. In a typical situation, and correct me if I'm recalling any of this incorrectly, when we go through the docketing process and the amendment process, the staff will present each one with some facts and figures and so forth. And they typically do a basic simplified analysis of this topic, which in general has almost never been very much of an issue. But what really kind of in an oblique way is related to this topic that is frequently an issue that's discussed, is staff resources. So somebody that wants to make a modification of their property, and in order to accomplish that, it requires, for whatever variety of reasons there may be, a lot of staff time to do it. That usually has been part of the evaluation that's been discussed. Because, I mean, there's a work plan for the folks that we have, and you can usually accomplish a few more things than that. But if you get a lot of people coming in at one time with a lot of complex requests, then you create a situation where you either have to set aside the work plan and work on their items, or you have to hire more people, which of course is a fiscal impact. Rarely do I recall that we've actually had a lot of discussion about direct fiscal impact. It's typically more about resources, outside resources, what would need to be done to accomplish the request. At least that's been what's happened in the couple of years that I've seen it or been involved.
Yeah, and that's, so to the chair's point, that's with, that's with the actual docketing process itself, right? So again, keep in mind that in the two-step here, this is the actual decision criteria to whether a change actually happens. So we're beyond the docketing at that point. But that's spot-on in terms of, and we hit on that earlier, let's see if I can get the exact section here for you. In the 24A 1001O, we speak to the chair's comments in 3B about the city reviewing, assessing, and preparing a recommendation as to whether or not to add a docket request to the annual docket based on alignment of work plan items, budget, and staff availability to complete a full review of the proposal in consistency with the city's current policy and programmatic priorities. So that, those are the criteria for when you're considering whether to docket something or not. Once it gets docketed, it goes through the full legislative review. This section here that's up on the screen, those are the actual decision criteria whether to approve something or not, and the change occurs, right? The, we haven't had, the reason why we haven't struggled with items that have been docketed in the last couple of years, and kind of circling around this, these particular criterion, especially this fiscal one, is because we haven't had any of those, kind of the private individual property spec ones with the land use map amendments to actually go through. We've had, we've had some text amendments, we've had like, you know, integrating the Parks and Rec Plan into the comp plan and doing some text amendments for that. So this one hasn't really come into play, but if we do get some, well, we've got a site-specific one that got docketed that we're processing right now, that criterion will come into play as it gets processed through. And whether the commission sees it this year or next year, depending on how quickly it moves along, we will certainly be having a discussion about that when it gets to that point. So Miriam reminded me while you were discussing here a moment ago, you know, with a site-specific one, we get a whole bunch of information once it gets docketed, right? So when Miriam was talking earlier about the requirement, 30 days after being docketed, you have to get your application into us. Well, part of that application is getting the necessary professional technical studies that may be required, SEEPUP checklist, an environmental checklist, and then all the other information on the application forms that we get. There's quite a bit of information that the city receives that we begin to go through and analyze, and, you know, we have our engineers take a look at it. And if necessary, we have, you know, a qualified professional to contract with to review specific technical portions of it if we need to. So Commissioner, to your point, it's who's making those, who's reviewing that information, making those decisions. We do a staff analysis, and then we would be presenting that staff analysis to the Planning Commission. You would take a look at it as a commission and then make recommendations then on the specific, you know, change request to the city council.
So it seems like you, they are not allowed to, amendment addresses, I'm sorry. The council may approve or approve the modifications and amendments to the comprehensive plan if it outlines, and then it does not have an adverse fiscal impact. It seems like just about anything could have an adverse fiscal impact on the city. That's kind of what I'm getting at, is there's no prerogative the council seems to be able to take on whether that adverse fiscal impact is worth it too. Because you could have something that's to the greater public interest and an adverse impact on the city, fiscal impact on the city.
So kind of a subjective test, not an objective test? It could be anything that they decide is object, or?
I suppose, yeah, I suppose. It seems like, am I incorrect that you could have something that's for the greater public good and also have an adverse fiscal impact on the city? And it seems like those two could be, could compete, and then we wouldn't be able to take something forward because it might cost the city some money.
So I think, rereading this, that maybe what we need to do is adjust the language to soften it a little bit. I think, you know...
I think, Miriam, it maybe was a bit more definitive. Because I, I just said earlier, I like it. I like number four. But maybe it is open to interpretation as to what an adverse financial, fiscal impact is in the city. I mean, that means a lot of things, and in a lot of ways, I kind of like its vagueness. But maybe for some people, maybe we should tighten it up a bit and make it a bit more, a bit more pointed and state exactly what we mean by that. You know, because everything probably can be considered a fiscal impact to the city, but maybe we're talking about kind of extreme situations. And so maybe it just needs to be more definitive.
And also, did we have some sort of language around that in the old chapter?
We did not, no.
So there was a particular reason why this was brought in? So I think it would be helpful for us to understand why highlighting, you know, the fiscal impact was important to incorporate into this chapter.
Maybe define what is meant more specifically of adverse fiscal impact. What do you mean by that?
Because I like the language because it's an attempt to protect the city and an attempt to protect taxpayers. And so that's why I like it. And so I think it certainly should be in there, but maybe we just need it to be a bit more definitive of, you know, and explain it a little bit more. Maybe we just need a couple more sentences around it. But I think the intention behind it is good.
Okay, well, why don't we chalk this up as directive number one from the commission this evening? And we'll put that on the list to take a look at over the next couple of weeks. And we'll come back and report to you in April on how we've done. And you'll get to be the judge, so.
I would just point out...
Point's taken, so.
I would just point out that, in my view, almost everything that the city council does is subjective. That's why they're in that position. So there's probably no way that we can write subjectivity out of everything. I think it's laudable to try to put some limits on things, but they will always, they will choose to move something forward that has an adverse financial impact sometimes, or not move something forward that doesn't. That's kind of what they do. That's why things come before them. So I don't think we can necessarily write 10 more paragraphs and get it to be exactly right. Part of what their role is, is to make those kind of decisions.
Yeah, and to that point, the commission also gets to make those recommendations, right? So the findings on any specific example that may come through the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation, back to, you know, balancing decision criteria that maybe are a little bit subjective, the commission may balance a couple of criteria together and make findings that, you know, that you as a body don't feel that there is an adverse impact given, you know, criterion three or two, or, you know, whatever other competing, you know, competing element is out there for you to consider. And, you know, the council has the same job to do, right? So...
I think there's a way to have some sort of middle-of-the-road solution to this. I understand your point very well, that a lot of what they do is subjective. But that doesn't mean that we're not here to advise and control that a little bit. And that's, I think, all we're asking is, you know, for some clarification on that.
So we'll do some work on it and come back to you with something.
Okay. Any other comments around the decision criteria? Okay. All right, so our last item to conquer this evening is related to noticing and public participation, and you'll find that on page five. So you'll notice that we've separated noticing procedures for the periodic update and annual amendments. And the reason that we did that is because the periodic update is a lot more extensive than annual amendments, and we want to make sure that we really have a comprehensive approach to public engagement and that we're reaching the maximum number of people for that. For annual amendments, we talked already about posting a summary of each amendment on the website and allowing the public to comment on those and sharing that with Planning Commission and City Council, in addition to the four public hearings that you will have to provide comment as well. In addition to this site-specific land use map amendment proposals, once they've been docketed and they turn into the amendment proposal, we'll have additional noticing requirements that's determined by the Director of Community Development. And those are going to be listed on the application form so that applicants will know ahead of time what those are. We also are proposing some changes to the way that we notice public hearings for the comprehensive plan and development regulation amendments. And that is that we're shortening the lead time for posting the notice to two weeks. And our goal in doing this is to reduce the need to cancel and reschedule public hearings due to changing agendas, inclement weather, and other issues. Additionally, since the world is shifting to online, we changed the noticing requirements from posting in the newspaper to posting on the city's website. And that way, we can link people directly to the comprehensive plan amendment page where they can access additional information.
A supplemental comment to that, just back to the 14-days proposed change. This is also a change as we go back into subsequent phases of our subdivision zoning code updates we'll be making for land use applications in general, shortening that from 30 to 14. So everything will be consistent across the board. We've, I can think of several examples in my five years here off the top of my head where we've gotten caught by a 30-day lead time for various reasons. The most recent one being in February with Mother Nature intervening with some snow events that we had. City council ended up canceling their February 11th meeting that we had a public hearing scheduled for, for the development regulations, phase one. And because that meeting got canceled, nobody was here, we had to go back and re-notice that with that 30-day lead time. So March 14th was the earliest we were able to get that rescheduled, literally rescheduling it the next day and getting the notice to the newspaper. The 14th of March was the absolute earliest, 33 days later, 32 maybe, with the shorter month in February. But we had a work program and a schedule. We worked very hard with the commission in December and January to get your recommendations on those development regulations to the city council, so that the city council had an express intent, they did not want to have to extend the interim regulations. They wanted to have the permanent regulations completed within that six-month window of the interim regulations. And as it turns out, we weren't able to do that because of Mother Nature. So the council on March 14th also had to have a public hearing and adopt another emergency ordinance to extend the interim regulations while we now work through the final deliberations with them on the permanent regulations. So our clerk's office, our legal counsel, our city manager's office, and certainly the planning department, we're all supportive of shortening that 30-day public noticing for hearings down to something a little bit more reasonable. And it's more consistent when you look across east-side cities and elsewhere throughout the state, where we're coming much more in line with what the general practice is out there with our comparable cities and counties, so.
So I think I saw a suggestion made by someone that we consider other avenues of noticing as well. And I feel like I see things on social media from the city about these sorts of things. I didn't go back and look and double-check that, but it seems appropriate, without naming Twitter or Facebook or whatever, to say if we do that anyway, and it's a reasonable policy, to utilize social media to provide notice. Is that an appropriate thing to do? Does that have to go through a communications review? Or, I mean, it feels like we do that anyway.
Yeah, so we could work with our communications manager, I believe that's her title, to post something. I think the challenge there is any comments that were made on social media, I don't believe, would be on record, right? So we could post that, you know, the annual deadline is coming, that people can submit applications, or that the summaries have been posted on our website, and just link people on social media directly to that, I think would be the best option, probably.
Chair, I think to your point, though, you may have been also thinking, though, like, some sort of post on social media, Planning Commission public hearing this evening or on Thursday evening or something.
Exactly. Any of the noticing requirements that you're putting in the newspaper, really, there is no actual newspaper, really. So social media has kind of become the default communication tool. And I think I've seen much of that from the city. So if that's what we're doing, and that's appropriate, and there's a way to include it as our method of noticing, then we should do that.
Okay, so, sorry.
So just quickly then, so under this, it's on page six, 24A 1503O, Notice for Public Hearings pursuant to having a conversation with our city communications manager, we may add an additional item there. I think we want to be a little bit subjective about it. To the extent possible, provide, you know, provide something on appropriate social media about upcoming public hearings or something.
So I like the idea of outreach to many, many people using different tools. I think, thinking long-term, since this is a code, you know, I mean, we can always revisit it, I'm a little hesitant with social media. I mean, you know, just because we might have different tools, we might not have them in the future. Plus, I think one of my other concerns is, depending on what kind of staff the city has had, we have not been consistent with posting on the different social media. And, you know, it becomes really difficult to engage public when there's not a consistent outreach using the same tools. So I like that idea. I think it can be a supplemental tool without us adding that into the code language.
Could be part of our...
Guidelines or process.
Communication strategy for the city that would, so it wouldn't live in code, but it would live in a general strategy that is supported by the city council as to how we conduct ourselves with city communications, so.
One more comment on the communication piece. Under 24A 1501O, where it talks about all these different ways of posting this information, I'm kind of curious. It says broad dissemination, but you could also use only one of the following methods if you wished. That doesn't seem very broad.
One or more.
Yeah, one or more means one or more. So you could, if you just use one, you're in compliance with the chapter, but that's not broad dissemination. I can...
No, excellent point. As Deputy Director David Pyle would say, that's a dial that you can turn up or down to your satisfaction to recommend to the city council. I think we've got nine items...
we've got nine items there. If you'd like to turn the dial to five, to be more than 50% of those, that's certainly within your purview to recommend that to the City Council.
I had a similar, and I wrote it down, I was going to turn it in at the end of the meeting, but thank you, Director, for that. And when I read that, I read it the same way. And, okay, this is what I said, should use A and B as the two, and any others. It just seems like everything should be on the city website. And now I'm thinking about the RCWs. They must require, like, you have to notify the interested parties. That's kind of what I saw. So I like one and two, or A and B, so.
And I think Miriam's going to add to that, but before she does, keep in mind, so the subsection we're working under here is periodic updates. So those are the, what that means to us today is those are the every-eight-year major updates, right? So 2015, 2023, and so forth. So, go ahead, Miriam.
I was just going to add that in this case, the RCW is a little vague, and it does give a long list and say you have to have a plan. These are some kind of recommended best practices. That's not verbatim what it says, obviously. But there's no specific items called out that you must do.
I'd kind of like to jump back a little bit and perhaps consider, instead of listing specific channels of communication, we list a minimum threshold of a way to reach a certain amount of the population. In two years, we might have a completely different way that we're communicating with people. Twitter popped up in a year and it was very popular. If we were to step back and remove all of the specifics, or maybe ones that we just have to have to comply with state law, and say that the city needs to, you know, use its best judgment to reach 50% or 60% of the population, that would give them, give you guys, the ability to use whatever channel is best for a specific notice, rather than listing out something we have to change in, you know, maybe three years or...
I think the challenge, at least for me, that I foresee in that is how we track that, right? So I know now with social media and tools like that, there are ways to track it. I think the challenge, at least that I've noticed in my current role, is I don't have access to any of that, right? So I'm going to have to work with the communication manager and constantly be in contact to track how we're doing and assess things. So that's one challenge I foresee in doing that, just because we're not set up to have complete access for every staff member to a lot of those communication tools.
Okay.
So it's something to think about.
Yeah, I completely understand that measuring that is challenging. In that case, I'd like to consider adding online ads as a method of reaching the residents, because it's not on here, and we can definitely spend some money on that, too, if that's a...
How would you do that?
Yeah, I think that, again, would be very specific, right? And then you're narrowing down your reach to people who are only online, right?
That's true, and I did submit this in a...
And that has a fiscal impact, again, on the city.
Exactly, yeah.
Depending on which media you're trying to reach, and, you know, what kind of tools you're trying to reach. I think that, in my opinion, would complicate things further. I think I liked the earlier idea of, let's keep it to a general standard modes of communication that probably we don't have to update the code often, so that we are doing all the things that we need to do. And again, like you said, you know, it's a dial. We can use one tool, we can use many tools. I mean, the minimum that we have to do is, you know, post it outside, you know, the city building or in the foyer. So that is something that we should definitely continue to do. But I think if we start targeting specific markets, things like that, I think it'll just get very complicated very soon.
I agree, and I sent this in an email as part of my question. If you post it in just the newspaper, that is sufficient, and yet, you know, there's hardly any subscribers to newspapers, so then you're not reaching anyone as well. So that's, I guess, why I'm thinking that adding another channel if we can't go more broad.
Well, that's why we have, I guess, yes, and you're right about newspapers, we don't have a local newspaper up here anymore, anyway. But, you know, we have this, it says here, city websites, signs and flyers, notice boards, local newspaper, local media. So there is still a wide variety of forms of media here to choose from, and I think they're down there because they still capture the widest audience. And a local audience, because I think social media is great, but are you, you know, trying to target that to the right people? Are all and sundry hearing about something that's going on in Sammamish, or are the people in Sammamish hearing about what's going on at Sammamish? Because it can be such a broad base. You put something up on Facebook. So I think we have a long list of things that we can choose from here, and I think communicating with our locale is continuing to be challenging. And there is a certain amount of responsibility as well on the citizen to get themselves informed also. So if it's up on the website and we're using all those other, you know, to me, it seems adequate.
Let me maybe put a slightly different spin on this conversation for us that might shed some light on this. But before I get to that, item E, the local newspaper, it just dawned on me, that actually, we'll amend that for the version we bring back, or for the amendment matrix we bring back to you in April. That's going to get changed to notice in the newspaper of record for the city, which we actually do have a newspaper of record that's the Seattle Times. Everyone's correct, we don't have a local newspaper. But that actually technically needs to be amended to the newspaper of record for the city. So we'll make sure that gets in the amendment matrix. The light I wanted to shed for everybody is, just to kind of step back from this a little bit, this is a minimum, this is a requirement that we have to have in our code for a public participation plan for periodic updates. But to maybe spin a little reality here for the commission on this, you know, when we embark on some sort of planning effort or, you know, Public Works, for example, will do different outreach plans for road improvement projects and so forth, what happens behind the scene is, before we get going with some sort of, you know, planning or project effort, there's a degree of strategy that gets formulated to, how are we going to do public outreach for this particular effort? So the Urban Forest Management Plan, something that's going to be coming to you this year that has been in the works here, it's been baking for, you know, a solid 18, going on maybe 24 months, in various forms and fashion. Well, there was a whole public outreach component that was custom-designed for that effort. In addition to many of the things in this list that were included for periodic updates, there was activity at the farmers' markets, there was a photo contest, there was all kinds of business that was included to try and engage the community. I think there was an online, wasn't there, an online, Mary's shaking her head, an online survey. I mean, so there were all these other tools in the toolbox that we worked with our, at the time, communications manager to put an outreach plan together to be able to have our community involved in that effort. And I think we had, I want to say it was in the hundreds of people that ended up participating through the survey and the photo contest and the market and so forth. So this is a minimum requirement that we're outlining here for periodic updates of the comp plan, but the city has a lot of tools in its toolbox for community engagement and outreach.
So just to follow up, it sounds like Planning Commission may want to consider, as Jeff said, turning the dial and other possible revisions for April. So maybe spend some time thinking about that, and you can email in your suggestions and comments to me.
Okay. I have a couple of suggestions I've already written down, but I'll just email you.
Perfect.
Yeah, perfect.
Any other questions, comments on this piece? Okay, one more slide, and then we're done. This is you.
Oh, yeah, this is me. So we've mentioned April a couple times, so date being confirmed here, April 18th will be the next discussion on this subject. So on the 18th of April, what we're going to bring back to you is, we're going to actually bring back this same draft of code language that was included in your packet for tonight for version control. We're going to keep that the same. But then, we're going to bring back two additional attachments that will be included with the agenda bill in your packet on the 18th. One will be a Q&amp;A matrix, so questions that we've taken so far, anything that's come up here tonight that needs to be included in that, plus over the next week or so, any questions that you email in to us. We will build that into the Q&amp;A matrix, so you'll receive that in your packet in advance of the meeting. We probably won't go through that one by one at the meeting, but if you have specific questions, once you read your packet materials that you want to bring up at the meeting on specific items in there, we'll be happy to have that discussion. And then, just as important then, will be the amendment matrix, which, again, for version control, same version that you've got tonight, but then we'll basically build a matrix that will have proposed amendments. So like the newspaper of record item that I just mentioned, that will be an item in the amendment matrix. It might be item five, right? Change the language in this version from X to Y, newspaper of record. So those would be the materials for the 18th, and we'll get those matrices polished up and have those in your packet, and then we'll have the public hearing on the 18th, and we'll go from there and see how you feel about it, so.
Again, I wanted to say I really like the graphics and the conciseness of all the slides we saw, if we want to call them slides. But the Director brought up one thing. What will we be studying on, or participating in on the 4th? Is that the right date, the next meeting, April 4th?
You're a mind reader. We're going to talk about that. We're going to have a little Director's Report before we adjourn this evening, so. You know me very well at this point.
So a couple of questions. One, for those of us who may have sent you email comments, particularly with various text edits, do you want us to do that again somehow, like with this form that you gave us?
If you've already sent me edits, I will use those. If you have new ones that you found as you're stumbling across things, just use that form, or email me.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I went back over and I looked at our May 18th meeting 2017 when we were looking at Title 24, and it was a comment from, it was a public comment, and we had a citizen say that the process was so complex and that it needed to be simplified. And I really think you've done a nice job simplifying. I think the four goals that you set out, to easy to navigate, clear procedures, less redundancy, maintain compliance, I think you're certainly on the right track. So I think our citizens will appreciate that the document is smaller, that it's easier to read, it's better laid out, it's more compact and concise, and that it will hopefully take an already kind of complex situation anyway and make it at least more simple, you know? And so, well done. Thank you.
I don't know if you sent this to everybody, but you did send a link to the website page that has Comprehensive Plan Amendment applications. If you didn't send that to the whole commission, I'd encourage that, because I think that's a useful thing to see if people are interested in pursuing something, getting on the docket, this is a good place for them to start. And so for all of us to see that, I think, would be valuable. And I think it's actually, it helps me even just to be able to see it in a short, you know, especially having read this. I'd just encourage that we email that to everybody.
Sure, I'll do that tomorrow.
Anything else on this subject? Any other comments? Okay, let's move on to public comment for the evening. Mary or Paul, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment this evening?
Hello, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. First of all, excellent work. Thank you for coming forward with stuff so we don't have to keep requesting that you do it. It's great to have it come from staff and obviously very well thought out. I'll actually work backwards on my comments here. Great discussion by Josh and Mark Lewis on the no adverse financial impacts, because no means if it costs a dollar, this city's not going to do it. So I think some rewording is done. I would suggest if you're requiring that it have a public benefit, you're looking for no net adverse impact, because it might have to cost something, but you're looking for the benefit is greater than that. And there's actually other things written to that, and I believe that also goes along with the gifting of public funds code and all that, that Legals are interested in. If you want to go a little bit wider, you could say acceptable financial impact, because maybe it is going to cost you something, but you're not sure. And I'm going to go ahead, I've actually sat through the docket process for several years. So some of the people that had applications that none of them were able to get through, they said things like, I'm in an R1 area. In order to develop, it's so hard to pull utilities, I can't. So I'm going to end up on a water well, and I'm going to end up with a septic field that you're going to have to get rid of at some point. But if you would allow me and a couple of my neighbors to join together, we could get sewer and water pulled, we could do stormwater, and we'd even do some improvements on the road where you need more connectivity. And that's what they were asking for in doing that. So I think Larry Crandall had a great question, what is a positive impact? And I think when you're looking at those things, just sitting in the back, maybe somebody who's going to allow trails, or allow connectivity, or get rid of some of those blackberries, or do a cluster grouping where they cluster homes and save some of the trees, I think those are positive benefits. So I think there are things that I've heard individual people speak to at docket items and other items that I think are very important, it should be allowed. So thank you for the questions on that. And so no net or acceptable financial impact. The next one was, I don't remember, so I was going to, so the original comp plan, so the city incorporated 831 of 1999, and the first comp plan was done in 2003. The second comp plan was supposed to get done seven or eight years later, so that would have been 2010. So then the next complim after that should have been 2017. We've only had two comp plans, we should have had three. In my experience, it's impossible to get a change unless you're the city and you're doing it. So I think what's looked at here is better, and I'm really, really, really supportive of, well, David Pyle had done comment, or I think David Goodman had actually done examples of how Redmond does theirs, where they have a generalized zoning map and then specific. And then Mr. Thomas spoke tonight about the complex of doing the two-step, and since we have two maps that are the same, it just doesn't make any sense to do that. So I think we really do need, maybe it's 2023, come up with that bigger, more, this is the general areas, and then these are the specifics. And I think the way that Miriam has done it with the two steps for qualifying, I think, is excellent, and I think you may get some people that would do that. Because there are some places in the city that may be R1 that should go to R4, or R4 and should go to R1, or other ones are places where you want to put R18. And I think if you look at Kohani, for example, it's got a lot of different zoning, and it makes sense. So I'm all for that. And then, as you know, I'm actually a docket item, there were errors. So the very first year, in 2016, when we were allowed, I put in some errors and some maps that are very important and need to get changed. So it's not just little, you're saying IT apostrophe S versus ITS, for example. I think, though, as people read, you are going to find small errors, so I would encourage the city to have one amendment every year or one docket that just says, these are the list of errors that we've run into as people have read it, or names that changed, like the Trails, Bike Ways &amp; Pass Plan, which was discussed a lot recently, that was renamed the Non-Motorized Plan. And I think when you make those changes, it really helps people, especially when they're reading to do things. So somehow you need to incorporate those. And then I think people should be able to have the changes and done, and I like the fact that I could just write it in and it would get reserved and saved away, so I don't have to go, am I around in September? What's the deadline? What if I'm traveling? What if, because I actually missed it in 2017, so I came back in 2018. So I started with the changes, and I went to the errata sheet. And I would like that if the city somehow, in what's being input by people, kind of becomes an errata sheet, so people can see where changes need to get made, I think that's fine. But I still think the errata sheet's a good idea, and then that way you don't have to reprint the whole thing. You can just go, this map should have been this map, and then you can just show it there or have the link to it, and then people can see it. So I think that's very important. Otherwise, I think simplifying it, making it shorter, it seems that's a lot better. I have not read it word for word, so I'll try to do that by the public hearing. If you could tell me the date that it came in front of the Planning Commission before, because I was not here for that, I had to do some traveling and work, I would like to know that, so I could review the thing. That would be good, if you can just tell me after I speak. That would be good if you can just tell me after I speak. Otherwise, I think it's really good. The other thing is, the first comp plan happened and I wasn't part of that. And then the second comp plan was about 2012 and they actually worked on it for three years and finished it in October of 2015. And my understanding and what other people told me is, they threw out the first comp plan and did a new one, and after they did it, they had to put all the critical areas in and stuff. I think it's very important to have the old comp plans online. I think the city should have a history of them, so I don't, I think there is a way to get the 2003 one back. But as we go into the new one, we need to be able to look at the revisions and go, this is good, this is good, this is bad, or whatever, because you're going to have big updates. And I think as people make things, I know King County and a lot of other things, they have like the series of documents that took to get there, so I think that's very important. And then I guess my single question would be, if someone has a comment or want to do, is the process clear enough that they could actually do that, have you keep track of it? And then even if that person goes away or moves away, that it would still stay with the city? Because I think their input's important, so. Thank you very much for all the work and looks good.
Thank you for your comments, Mary. And for what it's worth, with autocorrect and grammar check, I couldn't tell you which one should be ITS and which one should be IT apostrophe S.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Paul Stickney at 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. And I think this is a very good rewrite compared to what was done in 2017. I'm not going to echo all the comments all of you said, A, and Mary said several of the things I had in mind, so I'm not going to repeat those to save time, but I do think this is, is good. A few comments in general on some topics here. I like the August, the first Monday and August date. Instead of the October date every year due for the dockets, I think it's ideal, and I'm just giving my personal opinion, I think it's ideal to give staff time to look at what comes in during August where there's not all the council meetings and to kind of be, you know, ready to put these out to the city council in September and October. So I like that, that date. And I'd like to jump to the end for a second, then I'll come back and talk about a couple things in the middle. These comments tonight are more ad lib, because I was waiting to see what was talked about here. And several things got made very clear, so I didn't have to talk about them. On the item number four of the four parts, I think it's in 2415030 where there was discussion about adverse, I think we ought to spin that a whole nother way. Like the yin and the yang, or the yin and yang symbol with the light and the dark, the basically positive and the negative, I think that we should call that one, we as the king's we, adverse and beneficial impacts, not fiscal. Because if you think about it, when you have an impact, it can be quantifiable into a precise number, it could be partially quantifiable or non-quantifiable. What if there's a cool plat that saves tens and twenties and thirties of trees and has way less impervious surface? Well, you can't necessarily translate that into an exact fiscal thing, but there are a lot of benefits. So I heard comments tonight, which I liked on each side. A, leaving it wide, so there is subjective interpretation, but yet making it specific. In my opinion, adverse and beneficial impacts is a good two-part topic here, because to me, I've sort of distilled, in the work I'm doing, I've sort of distilled, in my opinion, that everything falls into what I call six sectors. One is the environment, another is transportation, another is people, housing, another is finance for city and the citizens, another is the region, and another is a community character, which is kind of holistic. What are potential advantages, benefits or adverse effects in those areas might be just an interesting test of a docket item? Some docket items might have a lot and a lot of categories and some not too many. So I toss that idea out there. In regards to Mary's comments on the first comp plan, in the transmittal memo today, I suggest just a couple edits, not that too many people would care, but just in the spirit of having it more correct. The environment and conservation element is not a mandatory element from the state, that's an optional element. I think that should just be called out. And when the comp plan went through in 2015, I was involved with that, the city did add a health and sustainability element, but it was interwoven through everything and the shorelines element is not mentioned here. So I think in, in the transmittal to members of the public and communication, those would just be a good thing to change. A couple places in the transmittal document, as well as, I won't list the specific places here, but my last comment is, there is mention about King County planning policies, but not mention about the PSRC multi-county planning policies. And they lay in a rainbow between the state GMA, then you have PSRC, then you have King County, and then you have Sammamish. So I think all those need to be in here. And, and the 2015 comp plan had a really good section in the introduction, and I, I don't know it by heart, but it had like eight or nine topics to be looked at for a comp plan amendment. I'd suggest that those either get synced up, incorporated or linked, so people can look there, because there were really good words there. Maybe there could be a reference in this title of 24A or those items could be incorporated. And I think that was, oh, yes, yes, yes. There, there was a mention in here about a small group of properties, and there was a, another comment, I can't remember the precise term, but what is that number? Is it two people that come in together or three or four? Let me see if I can find the section here. I have just a second here. Yeah, it's in 10, 241010, item two, small group of properties. Do we need to be specific what that is? If there are six owners that are R1 and they want to come together, does that pass that test or no? Or do 10? Or is it one or two? Or does that need to be at all spelled out? That's what I had.
Thank you for your comments, Paul. All right. Before we adjourn, we wanted to do, as Jeff mentioned, a director's report. So Director Thomas?
Yeah, and actually, before we get to that, I think both Miriam and I have maybe just a couple of quick items, just responding to the public comment we heard this evening. And I'll follow up with Mr. Stickney on this offline, but I believe the economic development and parks and rec elements are not mandatory under GMA unless the state provides funding to do those within two years of their, of the next major update. So I, I'm not sure, you may have unintentionally mentioned the environment element.
No, actually, I did mean the environmental and conservation element is an optional element.
Okay, well, I'll follow up with you off, I'll follow up with you offline on that. So, and then Miriam, you had something quick?
I was just going to point out that the comprehensive plan items that you mentioned that are really great, we agree. And those are integrated into the application forms. And so these, those are things that we're requiring applicants to respond to.
Okay. And then just a, thank you Chair, just a quick director's update on schedule, actually. So we, I mentioned urban forestry, the management plan back in our conversation here this evening. That's something we've been working on for a period of time. We're at the point with it where we've got a, a complete draft from our consultant that we now have started to spend some time reviewing. And I, I made the executive decision here this week. We were originally scheduled to bring that forward for its first work session on April 4th. The, the draft combined with a change in staff that we have right now, we're going to step back and take a few more weeks with that before we bring it forward to the commission. So we don't have anything else ready to bring forward on April 4th. So we're going to go ahead and cancel the April 4th meeting. Happy spring break to you. And we're going to, we'll get a revised Planning Commission agenda calendar out to you well before April 18th, before those packet materials go out, so that you have that for your planning purposes over the next few months. We are moving some items around, because we're going to re-thread urban forestry back into the schedule in May. And then we're, we're just going to move some things around to make that work. And, and again, with a staff member leaving and, and someone else we're looking at bringing on board, it's just going to be a little transition. We're pretty thin on the staff level overall, so when something like this happens, it, it does cause a little bit of a ruckus, so we've got to go back and reassign some things and sort some things out, so. Unless there's any questions on that, that is actually my director's update.
No, I'd just like to say, we, some of us have waited 18 months or two years for the urban forest management. So the reprieve of taking a, a break and having, getting ready for May is, is great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And will the Parks Commission taking, will they be reviewing the urban forest plan before we do or?
No. So the way that process was designed is that Parks was in, the Parks Commission was involved in the process last year, I believe. We don't have, we've got, I don't have it up in front of me right now, but on the council, one other thing I should mention, actually, in, in regards to meetings, you'll be okay canceling a meeting in April, because we're going to, the city council's going to be inviting the Planning Commission to a joint meeting with them, I believe at the beginning of June. We'll get that date for you and make sure you have that well in advance. So I think we were intending on talking about a few different things there. We don't have anything set up specifically to work with the Parks Commission on, this is, the draft is really a culmination of all these other check-in points we've had over the last 18 months. So we've done similar check-ins with the Parks Commission. So we're kind of at the point in legislative review now, or we're beginning the, the true legislative review now with the urban forest plan to bring it to you for your required recommendation to the city council.
Then I will quit here after this comment. Mr. Stickney's, what I've read from what he said is, an adversity to change might result in some complications, so I'll share that.
All right. Is that it?
That is it. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission this evening? Okay. Could somebody move to adjourn, please?
I move to adjourn.
All second.
And we'll practice our hand raising. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. And we're adjourned at 8:21.